Order, will you please stand to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Let the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Gutierrez, Commissioner Silverman.
Here.
Commissioner Corral.
Present.
Vice Chair Harper Pedersen.
President.
President.
The next item on the agenda is public comment, and seeing no public, I assume we can dispense with public comment. Approval of the minutes.
I move approval of the minutes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Seeing none, we'll move on to new business and the review of the California Environmental Quality Act and Planning Commission responsibilities.
Good evening, Honorable Chair, members of the Planning Commission. Before you tonight to talk about the SEQA process, as the Planning Commission is going to be, and you will reviewing lots of different California Environmental Quality Act documents that come before you in your coming tenure. And we've got some larger projects coming up that are on the near horizon, so we thought it would be a good time to talk about the SEQA process. And tonight, I'll be talking about what is SEQA, the process itself, your roles and responsibilities and roles of others, and also the timelines for SEQA. And SEQA really is a cornerstone of environmental legislation and law in the state of California, and it really has shaped the landscape of land development and has had a significant influence in the state of California for the last 30 or 40 years. In terms of the differences between planning laws and SEQA, there's two general key pieces of legislation, let's say. One is the California Environmental Quality Act, and it's contained in this book. It's about 350 pages, and it's put out by the state. And then there's Planning and Zoning Laws, which is another big book, and they're sort of the competing land use legislation that city planners, planning commissions, and city councils use throughout the state of California to consider or evaluate new development. On the left, you see sort of the comparison on the left between planning laws and SEQA. Planning laws are generally broad in nature, whereas SEQA deals primarily with environmental issues only, and it really treats properties based on the uniqueness of the project or the property itself, its unique physical characteristics, its location. And it's generally a decision-making tool, and it provides information to people. Some of you might have heard of the National Environmental Policy Act or National Environmental Protection Act of 1969. This is really what started it in the country in terms of environmental legislation. It was signed by Richard Nixon back in 1969. Prior to that, the country really didn't have an overall piece of legislation that would assist in evaluating environmental impacts. Shortly thereafter, just a year after that, Governor Ronald Reagan signed into legislation the California Environmental Quality Act in 1970. And SEQA is based on NEPA. However, there's some differences. NEPA is really more of a procedural document, and SEQA is also a procedural document, but really substantive, and it ensures that agencies try to avoid and minimize environmental damage when feasible. So there's two key functions with SEQA, to inform and to disclose. To disclose to the public reasons for agency approval of projects with significant environmental impacts, and also, I think, to foster inter-agency coordination. For instance, if we have a big project in our city that could have some impact on neighboring city, then it encourages us to discuss that and make our information available to those agencies, not just local agencies, but state and regional agencies as well. And also, it's a big enhancement to disclose information to the general public, and it enhances public participation in the planning process. There are a number of goals for public agencies, identify, find, study, and inform. And an EIR is only really a disclosure document. It's not meant to solve all the problems of a project, trying to fit a project into the fabric of a community, and it doesn't even have to mitigate every impact for a project to be approved. It's meant to inform decision-makers and the public on potential impacts to the environment, primarily, again, environmental issues. And what we're seeing now, I think what's emerging now are social and economic issues, or while they're not required as part of SEQA, we're starting to see local jurisdictions put those into the document because the public is interested. And also, from an economic standpoint, cities are too. I think it's also very important to note that certification of the SEQA document doesn't mean that you will necessarily approve the project itself. I think this is a critical distinction, because it's only the environmental effects that the project, that SEQA is looking at in terms of the project, but not the merits of how well the project fits into the community, its scale, its massing, and things like that. So there's a big distinction between certifying a SEQA document and approving a project. So projects, one of the first steps in the process is when it applies. What does it apply to? Generally, a government activity is subject to SEQA when an agency has what will be referred to a lot as discretionary powers. It's your decision-making authority. It's issuing building permits. It's when you want to build something or some other activity in your community. So there's definitions in this document here about what is a project. And so every time a new project comes through the city, the city planner will take this and look at, well, is this a project or not according to SEQA? Again, if you're going to build something, if you're going to fund an activity, if you're going to issue a permit, it could be something like a public works project or a grading project. It could be also like amending the zoning code or the general plan. Those are things that are subject to SEQA. So who's responsible for SEQA? Well, the lead agency is responsible, according to SEQA. And who's the lead agency? Well, the lead agency is the group with the main responsibility for issuing the permits. That would be, in our case, the city of San Carlos. And so, we would be in charge of preparing the document and ensuring that it's prepared correctly in conformance with SEQA, and then making a determination on whether it's an adequate document. There's a couple of other agencies. There's a responsible agency, and those are agencies that have a legal responsibility for carrying out or approving a project. That might be somebody like the state water board or some other board that has some kind of jurisdiction. And then there's a trustee agency. Trustee agencies are groups with jurisdiction over certain resources held in the trust of the people of California. That would be somebody like the Department of Fishing Game if you have a certain kind of species of animal or a biological organism. So what you'll see a lot of times in environmental documents is you'll see these other agencies have reviewed them, and I'll talk a little bit more about that later. So types of SEQA processes, there's a lot of different paths that you can go down in SEQA, and I'm going to talk about some of those paths, because the Planning Commission will see just about every one of them, and I think by the end of a couple of years, you'll all be experts on SEQA. And so, when we get something in, we determine it's a project, then you take a look at, and there's a number of these different paths. One is exemptions. Sometimes, you might think it's a project, but then SEQA says, well, some projects are just exempt from SEQA. You don't have to apply SEQA to it. And there's a couple of different ways to determine that. One is determined by the legislature. They determine that it's statutorily exempt, is what they call it, for demolition permits, small infill development projects, affordable housing projects, where they really, they don't want this rigorous process, they want to get these things through the system. Then there's categorical exemptions, and there's 32 different categories in this California Environmental Quality Act book. And these are small projects, like projects, commercial projects under 10,000 square feet, or small residential projects where you have three units or less, minor alterations to land. So if you determine those are exempt from SEQA, then you just fill out a form and send it to be recorded at the county recorder's office. Then you're done, essentially. Initial study, if you can't make the categorical exemption or statutory exemption, go down another pathway, and this path is determining then what kind of document to prepare. So there's other choices here, negative declaration, mitigated negative declaration, or EIR. And these are all the documents that the Planning Commission will most see in the coming months and years. So to determine which kind of document that you're going to need for a particular project, the first step that someone takes is to do an initial study. The initial study is really the backbone of the environmental evaluation under SEQA. It's otherwise referred to as an environmental assessment. So you're looking at the project, and this handbook provides cities with this checklist. And on the lower right-hand corner of the screen, I provided just a little excerpt from the document, and it goes through lots and lots of different categories. This one's for land use, and what a planner will do or a consultant will do is go through each of these questions and try and answer the question. Does it conflict with any applicable habitat? And then you look at these different categories, and it's up to the person preparing this document to make the determination on each of these ideas, potentially significant, less-than-significant with mitigation, less-than-significant impact, or no impact at all. So this assessment is done. Once you complete this assessment, then you're able to kind of see the project as a whole and see perhaps what kind of a path you need to go down next. And some of the typical impact analysis issues that you'll go through in this document, and it covers all of these just about, aesthetics, biology, noise, population, and housing. So for each of these, you have lots and lots of questions. But not only do you have to answer these questions, you have to come up with a rationale for how you answer the question. Why is it no impact? Why is it significant? So it's a pretty rigorous study assessment that you do just to figure out where you're going to go. So let's say that you arrive at the decision at the end that you could go down, and I'll help differentiate the paths in a moment, but you could go down the path of a negative declaration or a mitigated negative declaration. So these are the two most common documents that the Planning Commission will see. So after completing the initial study, the lead agency decides whether there are any potentially significant environmental impacts associated with the project. If yes, and you can't mitigate them, and you know that you need more analysis, then you have to go to the EIR. It's a much more significant study and analysis. But if no, the lead agency prepares what we call a negative declaration. And a negative declaration is a statement of no significant environmental impacts. A negative declaration, just a straight negative declaration, is the simpler of the major SEQA documents, and it usually consists of the initial study combined with a project description and a location of the project. And in this case, you're saying, no, there's no environmental impacts, we don't need to mitigate anything, we don't need to do an environmental impact report. And so you fill out a document, you do need to release it for public review, and then you file it. A mitigated negative declaration has mitigation measures incorporated into it. So this is where you've identified some kind of an impact. But you also know that you can probably bring the level of that impact down to a level of insignificance if you apply some condition to it. For instance, if you have construction noise, you have a big project, you know there's going to be a lot of construction. So you add baffling devices to the machinery, you start the construction at certain times of the day, you post things at the site so that if people have complaints, they can call somebody. These are mitigations that will bring it down then to a level of insignificance. You mitigate the impact. So the mitigated negative declaration, I would say, these are the two documents that, again, you will see most of. If they get to you, the mitigated negative declaration can actually be a very robust document. It can be many, many pages with a lot of analysis in it, and there's a 30-day public review period for these documents. So they need to be released, you still have to have the public review these documents. So now, let's say you went down that path, and you arrived at the point where you can't really come up with these mitigations easily. You know that there might be an animal or some other impact that's going to take a lot more analysis to get to the bottom of, and you've determined that it's best for the lead agency to provide a much more rigorous analysis and report. That would be an environmental impact report. And it's necessary where you think there's going to be significant impacts, and usually all the impacts are usually able to be mitigated in an EIR, but not all of them. The EIR includes the initial study, but also an in-depth analysis of the various issues. Usually, they take a long time, they're very costly, they're very comprehensive, and the developer pays. So the developer pays the city, and the city will then contract with somebody or do the work in-house, which is unusual these days. But that's to avoid the appearance that the developer would have any influence on the preparation of the SEQA document. So the city hires, the consultant manages that process, you evaluate it based on information, facts, thresholds. And one of the other unique things about the environmental document is that alternatives are required to be evaluated. So a number of alternatives, you have to have a no-project alternative. You're also going to evaluate the proposed project. You should have another alternative that might be environmentally superior to the proposed project, and perhaps others. And so, there we have the environmental impact report. Now, there's been a process that you go through. So the first step is, once you've determined, okay, I know I need an EIR, you then need to notify the public that you're going to prepare one. It's called a notice of preparation. The city prepares the document, we tell the public, we tell all the state and local agencies also that we're going to prepare this document. We get everybody ready and prepared to see this document. So the draft EIR is prepared and circulated. Again, a very long, rigorous process, lots of experts involved. Once you've completed your draft environmental impact report, then you release it to the public for review. There's a 45-day public review period that's mandatory by SEQA. During this period, the expectation is that you will receive comments from various bodies of people. I'll talk about that, too. One place that you automatically send the document is to the State Clearing House up in Sacramento, and that's a place where all the cities in the state of California send their environmental documents, and then they in turn will send it to the various state agencies to review and then get back to the city on. Also, people, the general public, the citizens of the city will respond. Maybe they'll respond to the Planning Commission at a public hearing or in writing. Either way, the city is required to respond in writing to every comment that's made on the environmental document. And then in terms of the final document, all the comments are put together. If there's any other information that's needed, that's prepared, any other analysis. So those responses are all put together with the new analysis, and that becomes the final environmental impact report. And what you're going to see in the next 30 days is a final document. So what you're going to see is the draft document put together with all the responses to the comments, so the original document that went out, and then a separate document with all the responses. When people respond and when you evaluate environmental impacts, it has to be based on facts. It has to be based on reasonable assumptions based on facts, expert opinion based on facts. So as opposed to hearsay or speculation or opinion. And, you know, in your experience, you will be addressed by lots of different peoples, lots of different points of view, but that's one thing to consider, is where is this information coming from? People can't just say anything. They have to substantiate what they're saying about the project or the environmental impact. Certainly, we will respond to any comment, but, you know, we will respond, look, you have to have some facts to back up what you're saying. So what are the options? If you identify significant impacts, you go through this process. What are cities' options, or what's most frequent? What most frequently occurs? Well, there's a number of different decision points that you can make. One, you could deny the project, or approve an environmentally preferable alternative to a project, but this doesn't happen all that frequently. Usually, a project is able to mitigate itself through negotiated process to get it to a level where it's environmentally preferable and it serves the needs of both the developer and the community. Or you could approve the project with environmental mitigation. That's the most common outcome that you'll see. And then there's another option, which is not uncommon, is to approve a project even though there could be environmental impacts that you cannot mitigate. And one example of this would be during the general plan process, the EIR that was prepared for our general plan identified an issue on Highway 101. Highway 101 around our city, Redwood City, Belmont, operates under peak conditions at the worst level of traffic service that you can drive in. However, it can't be mitigated by the city. The city can't do anything. The developer can't do anything to mitigate that. It's owned by a state agency, it would cost millions and millions, perhaps billions of dollars, to fix the problem. And yet, as a community, we have a vision for how we want to go for, in our community, from an economic development standpoint, culturally, the character of our community. So what the city of San Carlos did is, we said, look, we cannot mitigate it, but we are going to go forward anyway because we believe that this is economically beneficial, this general plan presents the vision of the city. And so that's what we did. We adopted what we call a statement of overriding considerations, where you override those considerations based on economic benefits or other factors. So what is the Planning Commission's role? Based on your judgment and analysis, your responsibility is multifaceted, and you consider the document, consider the input, review how it has responded to concerns and issues in the community, then you would make a recommendation to the city council whether or not it's adequate based on the identification of the impacts in the document. So it's essentially, you're making a recommendation whether or not to certify the adequacy of the environmental impact report. So that's your recommendation to the city council. You might decline to certify the document, and if you do, you could request further review and analysis if, in your judgment, approval of the document would not comply with the requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act. And if you certify the document, you will need to prepare a legal finding saying that, it's a written finding that says that, yes, indeed, this does conform to the California Environmental Quality Act. And city staff provides you with the language that you need to do this in our staff reports, and we'll, a lot of times, we're here to support the Planning Commission. A lot of times, there's experts that we bring in, the consultants that prepare the document. They're here to answer questions in various areas of expertise. And so we're essentially in a support role to help you through the decision-making process. So what's the public's role? Well, the public's role is to become informed, read the document, understand it, and then submit comments in writing or come to the public hearings and state your concerns before the Planning Commission and the city council. And the comments should be specific to the environmental impact report. So there's other participants, and I've mentioned some of them, the public, I've mentioned, I've mentioned some of the resource agencies, but there's other people. There's local interested parties, there's regional agencies, commercial and labor groups, there's regulatory agencies from the federal government, regional agencies as well. So you're going to get responses from a wide range of groups, and you'll hear, particularly on large, complex projects that are somewhat transformative, you'll hear from a lot of different voices. You'll hear from people who advocate positions on various things. So in terms of the process timelines, there are state laws in SEQA, both SEQA and the state planning and zoning laws. So we have timelines that we have to keep on top of whenever we work on a project that goes through this process. One of the first steps that you don't see here that initiates all these timelines is the application itself. And once we deem the application complete, the city puts in writing, this application you paid for, you filled it out, it's complete, then that starts the clock. And for a negative declaration, we have 180 days. EIR is 12 months with a one-time 90-day extension. These are actually pretty fast timelines when you consider all the work that goes into these documents and the complexity. Sometimes, you'll get a situation where a developer in a city, lead agency, will agree to stop the project on a mutual understanding. So they'll put a, if they both agree by mutual understanding, you can stop the clock. And then you might go off and work on something. We've had that with a recent project where we had to stop it, there were other extraneous issues that we really had to analyze before we could go further. Then, once you make a determination, once you certify that document, then you have about six months or 180 days to determine whether you're going to approve or deny the project itself. In our community, what we've done, for PAMF, let's say, for instance, we split the project into two phases. First phase is the environmental phase, and the second phase is the project merits, how it fits into the community, what's the benefit to the community, scale, massing, things like that. So that's what we've done. Now, on the big projects, we're splitting these two things up. They're two totally separate processes, but they're linked. Just to kind of take a bird's eye view a minute, business groups want a simpler process, and environmental groups want more strict protections. Enforcement is typically built in through, however, citizen litigation and not through state agencies, which is quite an interesting thing about SEQA. Citizen groups use Citizen groups use the threat of litigation to get leverage on projects, and the legislature is lobbied by developments or development or other interests to change SEQA to whatever interests there are. And so there's a lot of pressure on SEQA, and there's ongoing tensions over the years for the last 30, 40 years, even, you know, ever since it was adopted. The legislature updates the document every two years, but really, it's the court of law that shapes the use, I think, more than anybody. There's lots of information available in the SEQA process. It's, I think, a much more sophisticated debate. The public is much more educated about how projects fit into their community. We're making more sound decisions as lead agencies through the state. I think we're seeing less harmful projects and projects that fit in better to our communities. They are very expensive. They take a lot of time. They take, they're very costly. Minigated negative declaration might range from $50,000 to $100,000. An environmental impact report might be $80,000 to $1 million, depending on the complexity and size of the document. Could even be more than that. But as I noted, I think that overall, this is your update, your overview of the SEQA process, and I'm available to answer any questions, as is, we have our city attorney and planning manager here this evening. So, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have any questions. Mr. Harp?
Yeah, no, that's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Savae, before you leave, I had two quick questions. The first is, what if somebody brings up a new issue during the final EIR? How do we deal with that?
Well, good question. It depends on what the issue is. I mean, is it something that was unforeseen? Perhaps the city attorney could help me on this. I mean, you know, this thing has been, I mean, let's see, usually when it gets to the final environmental stage, you know, there's been so much public review and public comment that just about every issue has been analyzed in depth. However, I would have to say that, you know, if there's some significant issue that has not been evaluated, then you have the discretion not to certify an environmental document and ask for more analysis.
And then the second, the second question I have is, what happens if we're in a situation where we don't necessarily agree with what's in the final EIR? And I don't know, I'm not thinking of anything in particular, I'm just wondering, what does the commission do in that case?
Well, you may not agree with everything in an environmental document, but you are required to evaluate it based on the facts. And if the facts are there, and there's conclusions that are determined based on factual data and information, you may not, still may not agree with it, but it's adequate. So your duty is to say, is this document adequate? In fact, it doesn't even have to mitigate everything or evaluate every single detail. It's, is it adequate based on what we know about SEQA and what we know about the project and the community? So that's your responsibility.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, now we're going to move on to the Brown Act and a training on what the Brown Act means to us.
Well, I'm Greg Rubens. I'm the city attorney. Good to see you again. I know many of you are new, so the idea was to have this training, which I've given a few times before. And the intent of this training is not to give you every single regulation of the Brown Act, but to give you a general overview so that you kind of know generally what the rules are. And if you have any questions, it gives you an opportunity to give me a call or give an attorney in my office a call or give staff a call about the Brown Act and how the issue that's come up should be dealt with. So first of all, the Brown Act is, it's been around a while. Its first iteration was from the 1950s. It's named after Ralph M. Brown. It's intended to strike a balance between public access to meetings and governing bodies and the need for confidential candor, debate, and information gathering. The act creates a presumption in favor of public access, and that's important. There's some exceptions for closed sessions. You probably won't see that at the planning commission level, but there are exceptions to the Brown Act that allow for closed sessions, and I'll go over those in a minute. Who's covered by the act? Planning commission is definitely one of the bodies covered by the act. You may have heard the term Brown Act bodies. Brown Act is all regular commissions or committees of the city, with a minor exception for some temporary subcommittees that are not intended to be permanent. So two members of the planning commission could be a subcommittee to report on a specific issue, and that doesn't automatically mean they become a Brown Act body. What is a meeting? Well, a meeting, in your situation, a meeting is when three of you get together to talk about anything that's before, any matter that might be before the commission. I'll go over the exceptions to that, but basically, you don't ever want to communicate, three of you ever communicate on any subject matter that's potentially before the commission. It's direct communication, i.e., let's go have coffee together. No, don't do that, not three of you. Personal intermediaries, intermediary might be Mr. Marster's spouse, and he were talking about an issue, and he says, why don't you go talk with Angela and David about that issue and see what they think about it? You can't use an intermediary to try and develop a consensus over a matter that's within your jurisdiction. Technology, in this day and age, with Twitter accounts and Facebook pages and email and texting, it might seem innocent to send out that email to all the other commissioners, but that could potentially be an email that triggers a Brown Act violation if others respond. Now, you can send out informational pieces. I generally don't advise that you do that because you run into a problem. Information, it's better to have it run through staff. Hey, I saw this article in Western City. Maybe it'd be good to circulate that to the rest of the commission. Send it to staff, and then staff can disseminate it, and then you did not send, it was just information, and you did not intend to develop a consensus on any issue that might be in that publication. You know, I don't use Twitter, but people have followers, and followers apparently can comment in some way, so be aware of that. And Facebook, you're broadcasting everything out into the world, and all your friends can see it. Your friends might be fellow planning commissioners. Just the best way is not to talk about anything in city business or, sadly, defriend other planning commissioners just so that they're not part of the information that gets disseminated. People have blogs, and sometimes, I don't know if anyone here has a blog, but my recommendation on blog is it's your personal opinion, and you're basically not putting it out there for purposes of developing a consensus, but you could see how that might expose you to an allegation of trying to develop a consensus if you say, I like this project, I don't like this project. That's the type of things you'll see at the planning commission. So be aware of that. I think the key thing I say is developing a consensus. What are you talking about? What is the issue that's before or could be before your commission that you might have a say in or participate in making the decision? And if there's a, if what you're saying is sort of advocacy or expressing an opinion, you know, you're getting close to trying, potentially being accused of developing a consensus outside of the meeting. I mean, that's the basic point.
I had a question.
Sure.
Say if, would these rules apply, and I'm not saying that I've done this, but if any of us, before we were on the planning commission, as you were describing, were on certain blogs and stating some opinions or whatever, is that something that now that we're on the planning commission would apply under these?
Well, I think things before you were, definitely before you put in that application for the planning commission, you definitely can't be accused of violating the Brown Act for that. During the time you were under consideration, it's probably a gray area. There's a secondary issue about bias that sometimes comes up when you're acting in a quasi-judicial capacity up here, and generally, planning commission is doing that. You might, sometimes you review ordinances before they go to the city council. Generally, there's a project. It's quasi-judicial. That means you have to evaluate the facts and make specific findings. And if statements that you made even before you were a planning commissioner could show bias, you might have to overcome that by statements such as, you know, this, I wasn't aware of all the information, now I'm reviewing all the information, I think I can make the decision without bias, and then you make your best decision. And sometimes, you know, if the statement is pretty extreme, you might say, you know, I've already made up my mind on this, I think I'm going to recuse myself on it because of that issue. That happens rarely, but it is one option that you'd have. Exceptions to the meeting, what is considered a meeting, there are some, thankfully. They are, the first one is one I've sort of already covered, just talking with one other commissioner is not going to be a Brown Act violation. Attendance at a conference which is open to the public. There's been some interpretation of this. It's not as draconian as it sounds, but I think it's better that people at conferences do not sit together, do not talk about anything that's before, that may come before you, but, you know, if you're going to be near each other talking, you know, it's about things that don't have to do with the city at all. Attendance by majority of the council at other agencies regarding matters of local interest. Well, the three of you might go to Samtrans, something about the city that you're interested in, that would not be a Brown Act violation. And the three of you could go to a city council meeting, that would not be a Brown Act violation. But the same general rule applies, do not sit near each other, and especially just to avoid the appearance of that small talk people see on a camera, for example, might be construed as talking about something that might come before you. Attendance at social ceremonial gatherings, there's been some recent fine tuning of some of this, but ceremonial social gatherings might be, in the San Carlos context, the holiday lights celebration, or the art and wine fair, or hometown days. All the planning commissioners are allowed to attend these events and not violate the Brown Act. And then finally, the standing committee issue. So you can go to meetings of other, am I reading this correctly? You can go to other, I already said that, you can go to other city meetings or commissions. I already sort of talked about serial meetings. Serial meeting is, you know, Commissioner A talks to Commissioner B, who then talks to Commissioner C. It's easy for that to happen with technology, but with some basic rules, you won't get into trouble. You know, if you talk with one person, you can self-police it, in other words. You can say, you know, I'm telling you, but you really can't tell anybody else about The other prohibition is meeting between a majority of the council commissioner, subcommittee, and applicant. Pretty obvious, I mean, you're not going to meet, three of you aren't going to meet with a developer or an applicant, but it's prohibited. You can't do it. You can get, you can be lobbied. Sometimes, if you have an important application, you'll get lobbied by the developer or interested parties. You can talk with a developer or interested parties, but you have to disclose the contacts before you make your decision. That's not only, that's not only something in the Brown Act, but it's also in our municipal code. We've repeated it there. So when you, if you ever get lobbied, you have to disclose the contact before you make the decision on those quasi-judicial types of decisions. And I already covered writings and emails, conference calls, pretty self-evident, same type of thing. Location of meetings, all your planning commission meetings need to take place in San Carlos with some very limited exceptions. I don't know, San Carlos doesn't own any real property outside of the city. The planning commission doesn't usually get involved with matters that require a planning commission meeting, subject to a court order. You might be, you might participate in multi-jurisdictional meetings, that could happen, League of Cities events or something of that nature. Meet and confer with state, federal officials, I suppose that could happen. My office is in San Carlos, but if my office was in another city, the meeting could take place in my office. And participate as members of a joint powers agency. So in other words, if we had a JPA, Joint Powers Agency, that a planning commissioner was a member of, or required the attendance of a majority of the planning commission, that would be allowed. Notice and agenda requirements. It starts to become routine, but notice and the agenda must be posted 72 hours before the meeting, with certain exceptions. It is possible to have a special meeting on 24 hours' notice, the planning commission, that rarely happens. In fact, I've been representing the planning commission or the city, and I don't remember there ever being a special meeting of the planning commission, but it's legally possible. Can you add items to the agenda after posting? A couple of ways to do that. If there's an emergency, it's a majority vote. And then the other is if the issue arose after the posting and there's a need for immediate action. And then you have to have a supermajority vote, even then. And then you can have, if we continue a meeting to a specific date with not more than five days later, you can continue that item. Example, you might run out of time, it's midnight, it's late, you can actually agendize a meeting. That would be continuation of the regular meeting. There's been some, it's not in my flyer, but there's been some changes. They're not really before you, but there was a recent change because of the Bell scandal. Now, you cannot approve compensation at special meetings. So there's been some tweaking of the Brown Act, and it continues. Occasionally, something comes up and there's a need, state perceives a need to address Public rights, public always has, there's always a public comment section on every agenda because it's required by the Brown Act. The public has a right to comment. We have some ability under case law and interpretation to limit the time of public comment. We've normally limited it to two minutes. Sometimes, the chair has the authority, if there's not a lot of people, like tonight, to extend the time. But it's an opportunity to address issues not on your posted agenda, so by the very nature, it's not something that's going to be going on and on and on about an issue. So you have the ability to control that. We've had, we've shortened the times when there's been large projects, when we knew there were going to be lots and lots of people, and it might interfere with the ability to conduct the meeting in a timely manner, but basically, two minutes. with the ability to conduct the meeting in a timely manner. But basically, two minutes is the rule in San Carlos that we've applied. And then the access to all the packet materials has to be made available to the public at the same time that you receive it. Closed session, I'll go over this, I'll go over this very quickly, and you can, you can read the line, but because closed sessions aren't, maybe there's been one closed session I can recall at the Planning Commission level, but most of these issues aren't going to, aren't going to affect you. I think in that case, it was a litigation matter that was important to have the Planning Commission understand some aspects of the litigation. And penalties for violation. I say the best for last. It's a misdemeanor to violate the Brown Act. If you know or had reason to know that meeting was required to be open into the public, there can be injunctions regarding closed sessions. You can be referred to the grand jury if you willfully disclose confidential information. There can be an injunction, and an award of attorney's fees, and possibly a declaration that actions taken in violation of the Brown Act are void. So it's pretty serious stuff. It's been around a while. There's, the state, the Attorney General has on their website, and the League of Cities has a lot of information that you can tap. I can get you the open meetings law pamphlet from the Attorney General's website. It's about half an inch thick. It has a lot of information. Mr. Silverman might be aware of it. And, but that's some of the additional information I can get for you if you like it. So, any questions about the Brown Act?
None for me, thank you.
Okay.
Just a, just one that, actually, I think I remember Karen having the last time that we sat here. So, just to clarify, so if I had a barbecue in my backyard, and I wanted to invite everybody, but yet also a lot of other people, and the only thing we'd be talking about is steaks and how awesome my backyard is, that's allowed?
That would be allowed. That's a social gathering.
Okay.
That would be allowed.
That would be nice.
Really enjoy it.
That would be allowed. And, you know, I think, I mean, that's what that exception's for. I mean, I think there's a recognition that some communities are larger or smaller than others, and those types of events are appropriate. You just can't talk about city business at an event like that, when it's, and sometimes that's difficult for people who are
Right. When it's what you have in common.
You just talk about steaks and the weather and your nice backyard, and that is not a Brown Act violation.
And then I think something Karen also mentioned. So retreats and stuff like that would not be something we would be allowed to do under the Brown Act.
No, you can attend a retreat. Like, every year, the progress seminar is in Monterey, and more than a majority of the council, and some cities send Planning Commissioners to that type of an event.
Oh, okay.
It's the same rule though applies, is you can only, you can't talk about amongst yourselves.
Just be general subject matter.
Yeah. So if you're there at a conference, and, you know, the League of Cities has a conference every year, and Planning Commissioners can go. They have a training program, and so that would be an example of, if all, if the city decided to send all five commissioners to something like that, that would be, that would be okay under the Brown Act.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks.
And feel free to call me anytime if there's, when we get into the specifics of anything, and you have any questions, I'd be glad to help you.
I ran my e-vite by you.
The next item on the agenda is public hearing, and we have no public hearings tonight. So we're going to move on to reports, correspondence, and general information. Reports on recent city council actions.
Yes, the council did approve the budget and the capital improvement program, and I reported on what's in that last time. But once again, generally, that the community development department is absorbing redevelopment agency functions and the successor agencies. So we'll continue to provide economic development services and housing services under a division that is so-named. And we are moving in this, a two-year budget cycle, which is program-based. So we report our full-time equivalent employees sort of chopped up in the various kinds of services we provide, much of which is in the development and, and to you as a body. So that's, that's it for the council.
Planning Commission comments or reports?
Nothing for me, thank you.
I have nothing.
I don't have anything.
So the only item that I wanted to sort of have a discussion about here was the idea that in the past, there have been some rather lengthy Planning Commission meetings. And what I wanted to do is to see how the other commissioners felt about sort of setting a time deadline for the meeting, in the same way the city council does, where you essentially say, we're not going to go past 10:30 without a vote of the other commissioner, of a majority of the commissioners. And in that case, we would, you know, go an extra 15 minutes and try and resolve, if we thought that something was going to be resolved. Otherwise, we would end at a reasonable time, so that we're not making decisions at, you know, 11:30, 12 o'clock at night, especially if we have big projects coming along. So, comments?
I'm, I'm going to interject that the Brown Act requires that we agendize something like that at a future meeting, because it's not on your agenda. But I think the staff would be glad to put that on an agenda, to talk about a rule or a resolution or motion that would be your rule until overturned by a future Planning Commission.
Good use of the Brown Act. Thank you. So, Ms. Nelson, would you please agendaize that for a future meeting? Anything else?
I just wanted to remind everybody that I'll be gone from the 15th through the 28th of July. I'll be in St. Louis, so I will miss the July 16th Planning Commission meeting and my first RDRC meeting. Sorry, Scott. Thank you so much for filling in.
No problem. No problem. Correspondents?
Regarding correspondence, the Planning Commission was CC'd on some correspondence between neighbors regarding an issue that the Residential Design Review Committee dealt with, that our chair is aware of. And there's no action required of the Planning Commission. We will continue to try to facilitate a resolution. But even the RDRC directed the two neighbors to work issues out amongst themselves.
It doesn't look like they're speaking to each other, other than in writing right now, but
That could be. Maybe that's
Best.
Planning staff comments, reports, and updates on current, of current projects?
Yes. You asked me last time about the Long's Plaza paving, and we determined that it is owned by Mid Peninsula Water District, and I did talk with them, and they have paved it as a weed control measure. And actually, talked with our Public Works staff and Building Division about if there were any prohibitions to do that. So it's paved. The palm trees remain, but the weeds are gone.
And the fence is going to stay up?
Yes.
Was it, was it there before? I wasn't aware.
The, you know, I don't know.
They have a chain link around it.
That I don't know.
Because I did see it.
Right. There is the, the public road, it's F Street?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
I was concerned about the runoff of the water instead of soaking into the soil there, and how a lot of places are actually not allowed to do that, and just thought I'd see if that was something that needed to be addressed.
You also, we also have put in your packet the work plans of all of the other city committees and commissions, as you asked. Those are adopted by the council in the budget cycle, as was yours in May, I believe. Then as an added item, I wanted to note that the city council on July 9th will be considering a couple of strategic plan items. One is citywide litter, and they'll be looking at kind of maybe some changes within the downtown regarding trash receptacles and, but anyway, we are, the Community Development Department is doing the report back to them in collaboration with Public Works, and it's been an issue that they looked at about a year ago as well. So we'll be continuing to look at that. Also, that night, they asked us to look at the fees and the process relative to residential design review. So when you looked at this as a body in the spring and requested that that be passed along to the council, that was a lot of the content of our report to the council. So it's good work that RDRC has done in preparation of that meeting. And that, oh, as a reminder, you will be meeting the 30th of this month on a study session for the Transit Village FEIR. It is not out yet, but we hope that it will be out at least two weeks prior to your meeting. And regarding the 16th, I'm sorry, I, I asked the staff the other day, I do not, we're kind of waiting for one applicant to get us a piece of information, and we should know that this week. We'll let you know if that's going to be canceled.
Thank you.
But RDRC will meet.
Any other commissioners have anything?
Me? I had, excuse me, I had a quick question, as far as protocol. Now, since Jesse's not here, is this a time that I can ask this? What we, what is protocol if, number one, if you're not going to be attending a meeting, and number two, if you're just running late and the meeting has begun, do you just walk in and take your spot?
Yes. We, and I'll communicate back with Jesse, too. We generally report absent or excused. So if you let us know ahead of time that you're not going to be there, and maybe Jesse did let Lori Kledworth know, and it wasn't communicated to me. But, so we would report excused if you let us know you're not going to be here. And you certainly can come in late. We'll just note that in the minutes when you arrive.
And I'll just add for informational purposes that it might affect certain items if you're late, and it's in the middle of a public hearing on, on something. You'd have to be able to say that you were up to speed on it, and, and/or ask the question, what happened before I got here, so, or ask that if you had any questions about the presentation, that you bring yourself up to speed.